We move on to gathering counsel in. We have a couple of public hearings on the docket. To start, we are considering an ordinance to amend the Millersville Borough Code of Ordinances to add a new chapter 110. This is our false alarm system ordinance. At this time, I am opening the floor to comments from the public regarding this particular ordinance. If anybody has anything they'd like to say. Very well. In that case, I suppose we can close the... Oh, did you... Sorry.
Yeah, I have something to say.
You want to come up to the podium here for us? Name and general address for the record, please.
Okay. My name is Richard Franz. I live at 55 North Duke Street. I was looking at this false alarm during a calendar year. Zero. Come on. You got it. Engines going out, a lot of money. Just going through that, it should be at least $25 to $50 on the second, the false alarm. Usually, maybe the houses have been already notified that they have a problem, and they leave it go until they get the third alarm. I think it's wrong because when I hear the fire engines coming down the street, I'm thankful for them, but I also are very concerned about the person that's pulling out of their driveway when a guy's going down 50 miles an hour, which is no big deal. They're going, they have their lights on, but some people don't pay attention. You could be killing people by accidents, and we are putting people in danger. And I'd rather see the fire company or the police get $25 for a false alarm. Then that would make you think twice, maybe, why did the false alarm happen? I would work well, even if it was one of my kids or anybody else who would do a false alarm. I'd be thankful just to give $25 towards a fine for doing that and then straightening my problem out. So that just makes me wonder, if you don't are responsible for something, it's taken too lightly. But one or two fines go out, it makes people think a little bit. And that's what I have to say.
Richard, so I understand this. You think the fines should go to the police department?
No, whoever. I think I'm running at the end of the year.
Our first concern was that fire departments are volunteers.
Yeah, right.
We wanted them to get the...
Yeah, I meant I should have...
Oh, yeah.
Actually, the fire, the engines, and just for the gas just going from one to the other, costs over $25.
Yeah.
And the people are losing their time at work and everything else.
The fire department was here, commented on that extensively, and I believe them. They... We need a resolution to this.
Yeah, and at the end of the year, if they have a couple extra bucks, you know, a little party, I don't care. But, you know, I shouldn't be that way. But the bottom line is, I honestly feel that if someone's causing a false alarm, they should have, even if it's small feet, it makes people think twice. Okay, thanks.
That makes very good sense. Thank you for that.
Thank you. I might add also that since I was working on some of this, that the fines that are included in here have been suggested by the fire department and the university and a whole bunch of people we got together, Student Logic and so on, who got together and determined what, how they thought it should be written and what the fines should be. That doesn't mean that we can't change it because we can. But they recommended the zero for the first and second.
Very good. Other comments from the public? Now seeing none, we'll go ahead and close this public hearing. Any further consideration or discussion needed from counsel before I motion for a vote on this? All right. Then seeing none, I'd like to propose a motion to approve the ordinance to amend the Millersville Borough Code of Ordinances to add a new chapter 110 alarm systems. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second from Linda? That was Linda, right?
Yes.
Okay, very good. All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? Very well, the motion passes. A second public hearing. We will be hearing from the public regarding an ordinance to amend the Millersville Borough Code of Ordinances, Chapter 350, Vehicles and Traffic to Revise Parking Regulations on East Frederick Avenue. And we do have copies of all of these at the table here in the front. At this time, we will open up the floor to comments from the public regarding this ordinance. Just like with Mr. Franz here, please do come up to the podium, speak in the microphone or ask that we bring the microphone to you, provide your name and a general address for the record. Would anybody at this time like to speak on this ordinance? Very well. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing, and I will look to the rest of council for any discussion needed on this particular ordinance.
I would suggest that they're going to change it. When F and M parks, they park towards the curb vertically, and they get more parking spaces that way. I don't know. They're thinking of that, but it seems like a good plan for them, but it's not going to affect local traffic that much.
No, I agree. Very well. Seeing no other discussion, I will move that we approve the ordinance to amend the Millersville Borough Code of Ordinances, Chapter 350, Vehicles and Traffic to Revise Parking Regulations on East Frederick Avenue. Do I have a second?
Second.
I believe Phyllis edged that one out. All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? And the motion passes, also with unanimity. Very well. At this time, I call the meeting of Millersville Borough Council to order as of 7:06 PM. As a reminder, this meeting is being livestreamed. I ask that you all now please rise for the pledge and remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Be seated. Welcome, everybody, this evening. We are going to start with a motion to approve the council meeting minutes for the meeting held on March 11th, 2025. Do I have a second?
I so.
Very good. Marion? Any discussion needed or corrections on these minutes? I couldn't find one myself. Very well. All those in favor of a motion to approve the council meeting minutes held on March 11th, 2025, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? And the motion carries. At this time, council will hear any comments, requests, or concerns from members of the public related to items on the agenda or other matters. You will have five minutes to speak. Please either come to the microphone or ask that the microphone be brought to you. And we also please ask you to provide your name and a general address for the record. All right, very good. Moving on, I believe we have a presentation from, regarding the Freedom Memorial Park Master Plan finalization and a resolution to apply for a DCNR grant funding. Are you handling this one or Rebecca?
Yes.
She has pictures.
I'm going to put this here for everybody out to see on the screen. At the end of the day, they're going to bring up the maps. You can see it all on your individual screens. It's probably the easiest way to do it. I don't need to stand. I'm going to see if I have my own space. Okay, so as you all know, the long story of this is a few weeks back, we brought on a new consultant to work with us to get to the finish line with the park master plan and working towards applying for grant funding from DCNR, from PA DCNR. At this time, we are nearing the end. We've been working with various letting associates. They have put together an updated version of the plan from what you saw back in December with our previous consultant. This plan has a few differences on it in terms of location of certain items, but for the most part, it remains basically the same. The big thing to note about this specific site plan that you're looking at right here is the highlighted areas. After having some good conversations with our consultant and having a meeting last week with a, our regional rep from DCNR who came out to see the park, after a good conversation with them, we determined what's going to be the best opportunity to get grant funding through this application. Luckily, the rep who was here was brutally honest with us about what would be good for grant funding, what probably wouldn't get us grant funding. So what we are proposing to put forward in this application is the new restroom and the, making some adjustments and adding new playground equipment for the two to five age range, which is sort of the lower section of the playground area at the park. And also adding ADA access to that section, as well as putting down the ADA accessible pour-in place?
Pour-in place.
Safety surfacing.
Yes, yes. The really nice stuff that, like, is usually bright colors. So that is what we think is going to be the most worthwhile in this round of the grant application. This really would be phase one. As we talked about when we presented the master plan, the, this would certainly have to be done in multiple phases, and this would be sort of the one that we think would help us have the strongest application going forward for phase one. The phase one part of the project total would be $746,420, which is obviously a considerable amount of money. The, this DCNR grant application is a 50-50 match program, 50% local match, 50% would be coming from DCNR. So that would mean that the borough would be committing to match $373,210, which is also a considerably high number. The hope with this is that we will apply for this grant first. That grant application is due next Tuesday or Wednesday, April 2nd, whatever date that is next week. And then we would subsequently, right after that, do an application to DCED to go for their Greenway Trails and Recreation Program Grant, which would help cover then our part of the match. I think it's important to note, well, one, that our, our park commission put, you know, a lot of great ideas and work into this park master plan and took a lot of time to think through a lot of different elements. While, of course, our wish and hope and everything with the park is very high, and we know that, of course, the things we want to do with it, if there are lots of things we want to do that has a considerable cost attached to it, we think that this phase one will give us the best start to upgrading our park and give us the best opportunity to get grant funding to do so. And I want to note, too, that, and this is something that we talked about back when we had the budget conversation for this year, was that while we want to do these things and we want to go after grant funding, if grant funding does not come through, and even if we don't get that additional matching funding from DCED, we are not tied into this. We can, you know, if we, if we go for this specific grant, the DCNR grant, and, and they give it to us, but then we can't get additional funds from DCED or another grant program to help cover the costs, we don't have to follow through with the DCNR grant. We can politely decline. So we're not tying into it.
And that DCED GTRP grant, how much of that $373,000 match that we would be obligated to for the DCNR grant, do we expect that would cover?
That could be the entirety of it, or it could be 50% of it. That one is a much more wide-open grant as opposed to the DCNR grant that is strictly a 50-50 match.
Do we have something in our budget for this year dedicated to that, to the parks program for this?
Well, no, because even if, even if we are incredibly successful on both, both areas of these grants, we wouldn't actually be committing to actually doing any of the work until the earliest spring 2026.
Very good.
It takes them an entire year to go through the applications and for us to sign on to any agreements.
Certainly. And do we know what the turnaround time is before we would expect to hear back specifically for the DCED grant?
The DCED grant, that one, that application closes in May, and I believe we also get alerted to that one at the end of this year, 2025, which would then help us for the planning of 2026. The only thing that we have related to this project in the budget for this year is the cost to, to apply for the, for the grants.
Very good.
And to start, if we are, you know, looking to be successful, to start a little bit of the, you know, engineering and prep work. That's really all we have. So the resolution this evening in front of you would be, because we have to submit a resolution in order to apply for this grant. So the resolution would simply be saying that the borough is applying for this grant. This is what they, we intend to do with it. And we would intend to, you know, fulfill our matching 373,000 of it if we were successful.
With the understanding that we could still back out should the DCED grant go another way?
Yeah, absolutely. I did confirm that with the DCNR rep. So that, that, that is what is in front of us. We are moving relatively quickly. Unfortunately, I think I've mentioned this at the last meeting, that we were left in a great place with our previous consultant, and this new consultant had to sort of really kick it into high gear to get some of these documents prepared for us. We're also still working on getting letters of support from, what they require from the planning, from the county planning commission, our planning commission, and then just a letter from our park commission stating, you know, that they brought this project forward.
And Wednesday is that due date, by the way, just to give you a heads up.
It's April 2nd, Wednesday.
Would any of this be covered? Would any of this, could any of this be considered maintenance and come under our, our, or our park fund?
Yes, that's a good question, and we certainly talked about that. It would be, at least in looking up the specific documents of the creation of that fund, it would be really hard for us to make that argument because it really is truly for maintaining items that are already in the park. In this case, we would be talking about adding two new things.
Okay.
So, and, you know, we certainly don't want to drain the entirety of that fund because this would kind of like... So, wouldn't want to do that either. But the nice thing is, is that we also think we have a strong application to DCED because of, or to DCNR because we have that fund, and they like to see that we're already prepared to maintain any new items that we bring into the park. So the DCNR rep even said, like, oh, that's great that you already have a maintenance fund, so to speak. So we think that also makes us a strong applicant.
Other questions for Rebecca?
I will make a motion to approve the resolution to apply for grant funding from the PA Department of Conservation and National Resources to undertake the project Freedom Memorial Park Recreation Accessibility Improvements Phase One.
I'll second.
Second from Marion? Very well. Further discussion required among council?
I would like to say, since we're on Freedom Memorial Park, I received an email today with the, the final plaque for John Herr, and the gentleman who is behind us, he might tear Phil Gerber. Your name will come up again in the dedication, but the hours you spend in that are appreciated. And when that, that plaque goes up, I, we're going to think about John Herr in a different way, and I'm going to think about Phil, too. It's a lot of hours he put into that, so.
Well said.
Congratulations.
Then I will simply call the vote. All those in favor of the motion to approve the resolution, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? Very well. Motion carries with unanimity. We'll now move on to our reports of boards and commissions. Blue Rock Regional Fire Commission, Linda?
Yes. The March meeting was held at March 6th at the Millersville Station. The financial report was reviewed with a few heating deliveries being high. Year-to-date, $4,928.89 in interest has been received. In February, Blue Rock had 78 total calls, 35 in the township, six were false, 27 in the borough, 16 were false, and the rest were outside the district. Millersville Borough is going to pass a false alarm ordinance in March. Blue Rock will be, will be receiving $40,000 in state grant monthly for the new fire station. Dwayne has begun working with a marketing fundraising group to develop marketing and fundraising campaigns. There have been several major vehicle maintenance issues that show, will show up in the April financial report. There's a problem with mice at 905 at Millersville, and the exterminator is addressing the issue. Dennis Funk met with the archaeologist, and we are in good shape. The requisite paperwork for the state is being forwarded to move forward. Phil Listowski provided documents from the beginning of the district. They showed that we should be getting free internet, a savings of $12,000 a year. Dwayne will follow up. Also, a document was provided that showed that proposed legislation was to provide additional funding to towns who have state universities. Dwayne will meet with the state representatives. A meeting has been scheduled in Manor Township on April 7th with Scott Martin.
Just a quick question. Did you say archaeologist?
Yes. They had to, because the site's down by the river, they had to go through an archaeologist, and they had to go over the whole thing to make sure that it wasn't an Indian burial site or anything of that nature.
All right, very good. Other questions for Linda? In that case, we will move on to items that came out of committee during our last meeting. The first is a motion to accept the February financial report and authorize staff to satisfy the ordinary and routine obligations incurred by the borough for this month. Again, this is out of committee, so it does not require a second, but I will entertain any questions or comments anybody might have on the financial report for February. Very well. Seeing none, I will ask for a vote to approve or to accept the motion. All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Very well. Looks like we have a discussion coming out of Personnel Advisory. We are short our Personnel Advisory Chair, so Linda, if you would take up the torch here. We have a discussion and approval to advertise an ordinance to dissolve the Educational Services Agency. Anything you'd like to say about that?
No, it was discussed, I think, in depth at our last meeting. I think everything was answered. We had no questions at that point.
Very good.
So I'm looking for a motion to approve the advertising of the ordinance to dissolve the Educational Service Agency and the scheduling of the public hearing.
We'll call that the motion, and there is no second required, so assuming there is no further discussion on dissolving ESA, seeing none. All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? Very good. Motion carries. And last but not least, a discussion coming out of Public Welfare and Public Works Advisory Committee about a resolution concerning administration of Chapter 110 alarm systems and the code of ordinances and establishment of false alarm fees. Is that what we just voted on at the top of this?
Yes.
Okay. Then do we, I don't believe we actually need this motion then, do we?
No, no, we do. So, so the, at the top was just the ordinance. This would be the resolution to implement the fees and the actual administration of the ordinance.
Very good. Madam Chair, would you like to do the honor?
I would, thank you. Motion to approve the resolution concerning administration of Chapter 110 alarm systems of the code of ordinances and establishment of false alarm fees. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Very good. Marion? And I will just, before you go on, just in the point of discussion, thank you. I know that was a marathon getting through and getting this resolution through, so your work on that is appreciated.
Thank you.
Please feel free to call the vote.
Okay. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The motion carries. Thank you.
All right. Anything from you, Mr. Mayor?
I just had a couple of things. You have the monthly report from Police Department in front of you. Our chief is out of town for a couple of days. Also, I just wanted to pass on, I had a great opportunity along with Rebecca to join Dr. Wilba and Bob May as they basically dedicated the new spot where Lems will be working out of here on campus. So they had a great ribbon cutting on last Friday that we were a part of, so had a great time. The one other thing I will discuss, but I will wait till managers give their report on one particular item, and then I'll follow up with her on that.
Please feel free.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We will now move on to Ms. Norman for our Millersville University report.
Hi. Good evening, Borough Council, everyone here and everyone online. It's great to be here, and I appreciate y'all listening to what I have to say. So the first thing I want to cover is the new Chick-fil-A. It opened on Thursday of last week, and that was awesome. The location is open to the public, and parking is available after 5:00 PM during the academic year and all day during the summer. It's in the Student Memorial Center on campus. Made in Millersville Conference is coming up, and it's going to be on Tuesday, April 8th, also in the Student Memorial Center. This annual event provides students the opportunity to showcase research, creative work, and other scholarship. This year's event will feature live and virtual presentations. We invite the public to attend the event and consider volunteering as a judge to review or moderate presentations. I was told to encourage Borough Council members to volunteer to be judges, so try to do that. Next I have is the conference on the Holocaust and genocide. On April 1st, Millersville University will host the 40th Holocaust and Genocide Conference, the Children of Survivors of the Holocaust and Genocide Remembrance and Reflection. The conference will feature the P. Allen and Linda Loss keynote lecture by Yossi Klein Halevi, I think. I think that's how you say that. There's, for more information and registration, it's on our website, the university website. I also wanted to say about the arts at Millersville. On Saturday, March 29th, Millersville will present The Vanishing Elephant at the Winter Visual and Performing Arts Center. If you want to purchase tickets, that's also online. And on Thursday, April 3rd, the Arts Center will present, I might butcher this, so apologies, Flamenco Vivo Carlota Santana Quinto Elemento. The performance will feature a festive style of flamenco. For more information and ticket purchase, that's also online. It's theartsmu.com. Then there's also the Job and Internship Fair. The Millersville University Career Center will host the Spring Job and Internship Fair on Tuesday, April 1st. There will be between 120 and 140 employers on campus. It will, the fair will be held from 11:30 AM to 2:30 PM at the Vilt Courts, also in the Student Memorial Center. The event is open to MU students and alumni, as well as students enrolled at other PASHI Pennsylvania State System of Higher Education institutions. There's more information on the website. And for athletics, we, there were, okay. There were three students named as honorees for the second consecutive year. Darian Hoff, Sarah Hessler, and Megan Malecki were named, this is a long title, so bear with me, as 2024 U.S. Track and Field and Cross-Country Coaches Association NCAA Division II Indoor Track and Field Honorees. And once again, this was for the second consecutive year. This distinction goes to the top five individuals in each event from each region. Hoff and Malecki earned this distinction in pole vault, and Hessler earned the distinction in shot put. And that's all I have to say.
I, I know a proctor, Sean Gallagher, and when you talk about Chick-fil-A and you say it's awesome, he was afraid, he thought the students would, would not like so many of the citizens coming there. Was there any, any interference with the two people attending that?
As far as I'm aware, there was no major issues. Students are going there a lot, and just from, like, student perspective, there's a lot of people. I would suggest there's a way for you to, like, order online and then scan a QR code so then you don't have to wait there forever. But as far as, like, relations between the students and other people showing up, I don't think there have been any issues thus far.
It won't affect me because I saw their lines at other places. I wouldn't, I'm not going to wait in line for that. But he, they were really afraid that the citizens would add to the, to the mix there, but if you haven't seen it, good.
I mean, there are a few residents showing up, but as far as I'm aware, hasn't, it was a concern, but I don't think it's really, it's really become an issue as of yet.
Dr. DeSantis?
Our current hours are somewhat limited at the Chick-fil-A. As of April, as of next week, April, April second, Wednesday, we'll be expanding those hours because we're adding staff. And then next fall, we'll also be adding breakfast. So, again, as I think I mentioned to you previously, the whole intention here was kind of a soft rollout this fall with then a grand sort of opening with full service. Now, I've been over there a couple of times and honestly, I've walked in there twice now and Joe will attest this because I saw him yesterday. But walk in, see a long line, say hello to folks, and then go to the Sugar Bowl. So, I, I think, I think I'm not, I think I'm not alone and still going to the Sugar Bowl.
They're not going to see me there, but.
Yeah, 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 yeah. I, I did want to mention something else though to you, and this is a personal invite from me. So, in, in May, we have, I've put together with a colleague on campus, a half-day workshop specifically for municipal elected and appointed officials on using artificial intelligence, getting started. The program is designed to be specifically about municipal use. So, our examples that we're putting in that day will be municipal examples. And the aim is not to give you a conceptual overview of AI and get into the differences between, you know, different types of generative AI. The intention here is, we will be in front of computers, we will actually hands-on get started with using it with municipal examples. So, I want to make sure that you know that you are invited. I, I've already talked to the Borough Manager, I believe she's going to be coming to that. A couple of other Borough Managers I've talked to have also said that, but I wanted to make sure you knew that. I was in, I, I really would love to have any of you that are interested as well as council members because there is a wide use for this in, in the municipal operations. And so, that date is Wednesday, May the twenty-four first. And again, it's a half-day workshop and we're pricing this at such a low number that even our friends from the municipal side will be able to afford it. We're basically charging twenty-five bucks a head and that's really just for the coffee and donuts.
When does it start? What time?
It'll be nine to twelve.
Nine to twelve?
Yeah. And it'll be on campus in Boyer.
Nine to twelve for twenty-five dollars.
Yeah, 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 I don't know, I mean, because honestly, our intention is to just literally give you a program that's specifically geared toward the municipal use and have it be so hands-on that you leave with a working knowledge of how to get started. And I think that's one of the problems with some of the AI workshops out there, is that the, you know, half the time is spent on conceptual issues and, and you don't actually get to work on anything. And so, we're trying to make sure that you had the opportunity to specifically work on things that are pertinent to your operation. So, that's my invite to you. I'll send something along to, to the Borough Manager so she can distribute it, but love to have any and all of you who may be interested, okay?
RSVP?
Uh, yeah, there'll be an RSVP, yeah, we'll have an RSVP on that, on that document that I sent over to the Borough Manager.
And the location will be on that?
Yeah, yeah, it's going to be in Boyer, Boyer down in the computer training room, right above the Police Department.
You can walk over to Chick-fil-A for lunch.
Yeah, there you go, good job, good job.
It'll be May twenty-first, so there won't be a lot of students around to clog up the lines.
All right, thank you, Mr. Council President. Thank you, Dr. DeSantis, thank you, Ms. Norman. We'll move on to our friends from Penn Manor for their report.
Friend, as you guys can see, I'm solo today, I got dipped on, I guess, he had a volleyball game, he's very involved in that. Speaking of volleyball, spring sports are in full swing, those are all going well. Lots of guys very involved, a lot of my friends, so, yeah, that's been great.
Girls too.
What?
Never mind. You said lots of guys involved, I just said girls too.
There are lots of girls involved, lots of my friends, yeah. So, two things I want to bring to attention, FFA and chorus, two main things recently. If you guys saw any tractors this past week going through Millersville, we had our driving tractor school day last week. So, that was a great time for those involved and for all the students to go out and kind of experience kind of the Langston farming community. So, that's always something that's very much looked forward to, again, both by those driving and by those just in the school and staff in the school. We just had an FA banquet this past month and nine students earned their Keystone degrees, which is the highest degree an FA member can attain in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. So, that is amazing that we had nine total students this year get their Keystone degree. And then I'd also like to bring to attention, and this is really fantastic, our chorus this year was beyond insane. We had seven Penn Manor students representative school at the Region Five Chorus Festival. And of those seven students, five students were all state, which that means that they were the top five chorus performers for their designated voice part in the surrounding six counties. That is the most kids from one school in entire PA.
Yay.
So, yes. And I definitely think a lot of those kids are all same ones that sang in the musical. And if you guys, if any of you guys went to the musical, any girls went to the musical, you definitely hear a lot of their great voices. So, those lucky bugs get to go to Calahari Resort in the Poconos for all states, April ninth through twelfth. And I'd also like to congratulate Mr. Sae and also our teachers. We have amazing teachers for our chorus students and for our music department in a whole. That is all, I, short and sweet, not a whole ton, but yeah, thank you.
Very good, we appreciate it, thank you, sir.
Appreciate it.
And from there, we will pivot over to Rebecca, I believe you have something for our manager's report?
Yes, the first item I have is the discussion and approval to award the contract for our summer paving of Cottage Ave., Hur Avenue and Circle Road. We are looking to award that to New Enterprise Stone and Lime Company for a hundred fifty-four thousand nine hundred. This was the low bid. The bid was closed on March nineteenth. The lowest bidder, like I said, is New Enterprise Stone and Lime. We had budgeted a hundred and seventy thousand for this, so they came in fifteen K under, which we are thrilled about. Kyle is even more thrilled about. Our solicitor did review the bid documents and everything seems to be in order with this, with this award. This is a fairly standard one for us, our typical.
So, even though it's that much lower, we're not losing anything?
No?
No, no, we're still paving the roads as intended.
Yeah, okay.
So, look out for that this summer, everyone. Paving going on on Southern East Road.
Yay.
And we'll of course put out alerts when, letting people know about road closures and things like that. But we are looking for the approval to award this contract.
I'll make a motion to award the paving of Cottage Ave., Hur Avenue, and Circle Road to New Enterprise Stone and Lime Company for the contract price of a hundred and fifty-four thousand nine hundred dollars.
Seconded.
Okay, go ahead.
I'll take that one. Very well, any discussion required? I assume this is not what you wanted to talk about, Mr. Mayor?
No.
Very good. In that case, all those in favor of the motion to award the paving to Enterprise Stone and Lime Company, I'm sorry, New Enterprise Stone and Lime Company, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? Not surprisingly, that one passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, and I'm sorry, Councilwoman, I just realized you, you just left that street and now it's going to get completely paved on Circle.
Oh.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I guess you're on another new street, so it's all right, it all works out. The other item I have is an item that I sent over to council and wanted to have just an opportunity to discuss or answer any questions about the incident that we had with the waste activated sludge at the wastewater treatment plant. I sent you and with all the documents and everything, we sent sort of the timeline of the things that occurred and the information there. And we do have Les on hand, if you have any additional questions, just for the public's knowledge, just to give a brief overview of the incident. Due to some sort of unforeseen issues with a new control panel, that was a budgeted item that was put in at the wastewater treatment plant. A certain valve didn't close in, on a Friday afternoon, which did cause some waste activated sludge spill into the grass area outside of the sewer, or inside of the sewer plant area and into the Conestoga River. The, all the various things that we've needed to do in terms of cleanup, working with PADEP and the Fish and Boat Commission have been worked on. We believe at this point that the issue that occurred has been remedied as well as some sort of subsequent issues related to it. So, we're relatively confident at this point that that is dealt with and not going to be an issue with our new control panel. But I'm, we're certainly willing to answer any questions that you have about what happened or... I don't have any updates as of the last email that I did send you, so I don't, I don't have any new information about any potential fines that the borough could be receiving.
That's fine, I do have some questions about the specifics of this that weren't necessarily included in the, in the narrative. Les, I'm going to need you to, probably, I assume anyway, mostly wanted to know about the specifics behind the control panel failure. You said it's been replaced or was it recently replaced before this failure?
It was being replaced and this is when the failure happened.
It was, so the failure was a result of the replacement?
Correct.
All right, with it working as it is, in the event of a failure like this where we don't have a valve opening, what is the normal sequence of events?
If everything worked properly, when that valve, it was a sludge waste valve at the end of a decant. So, after you threw your ethylene out and chlorinated it and sent it to the river, at the end of that cycle, we usually typically have three minutes of waste in. So, it's a forty-minute cycle, it'll decant for ten to fifteen minutes, then it'll go to idle. At the end of that idle, at say, it'd be thirty-seven minutes, that valve will open. And then at forty minutes, it'll close because you had three minutes of waste in. That valve opened, but it didn't close. At that point, it should have sent an alarm where one of us would have been there in twenty minutes, saw it, saw it and took care of it. That didn't happen either. That's what really jacks me on this, it didn't alarm.
Yeah, so it sounds like you have the appropriate number of backups. You have an alarm and then like a backup alarm, but presumably because of the replacement of this panel.
Right.
Is that what I'm hearing?
That started that Monday. Wednesday, we were going to do the change around. They thought they'd be done at noon with that, it was nine o'clock at night and it still wasn't done. We ended up running it on manual till, so they came back in on Thursday and Friday. Friday evening, when we left, we thought they had, you know, both of us thought they had it and they didn't. So, they've been in, a gentleman was in yesterday, I think we're there. This, the sludge waste valve in question, both of them have been locked out. It had to be divine intervention for those valves to be able to open right now. So, we were running them during the day at, at their appropriate time, locking them out at night until we can prove that everything is cool with them. So, because obviously, another incident like this right after that one would be terrible. The first one was terrible enough, my heart sank when I saw that going on. So, yes, I, I think we're where we need to be, we're still putting it through its paces, so to speak, and not doing things at night that we don't want it to do, so.
I've had conversations enough with DEP to know what that probably sounded like on your end. What did Fish and Boat Commission have to say? That, that wasn't real clear in this and I've never had to deal with it.
Well, you know, when you call emergency response, they were there within an hour, had two gentlemen from DEP there that are on call. They recommend, you know, luckily, we had some silt sock left over from that East Cottage Ave. project and we knew we were going to have to lime it, but I wanted them to tell us what they wanted us to do.
Sure.
Because of the rain that was coming Sunday, they wanted a silt sock along the bank of the stream for where those placed. So, the two digester tanks, they, it basically overflowed on the two ends of them and it went down at a couple of different locations across the grass into the water. So, you have, the other thing you have to remember, this is, this is stuff that's already somewhat treated. It gets down to the digester to destabilize more before it goes to the volute press. We did a solids on it on, on Monday, it was point five nine percent. So, it was six tenths of a percent solids in that is what it was. It wasn't like raw anything going anywhere, it was very light. Most of that material settled out before it even, I'm not saying nothing got in the stream, but I'm saying the grass and everything else, believe me, Bobby and I can both attest, it was a very sloppy mess trying to put a silt sock in that on Saturday afternoon. We got out there about two thirty till we got done doing that and putting lime down. So, most of that is drying up on the grass. We're, we're planning on raking the rest of that up here before it rains again. And also, I plan on bringing my tiller in because we put some hellacious ruts in there. We got the tractor stuck, had to pull out the skid loader, we got almost had the skid loader, it was just a mess, it was ever-loving mess. So, about three hundred thousand gallons were what went out of those tanks. It wasted from four forty-five in the afternoon till seven twenty, when Bobby got in there in the morning. It was four hundred and seven thousand gallons went out of that tank. The digesters themselves, the two digesters hold two hundred and fifty-four thousand gallons, which were half-full. Estimated two eighty-four, two hundred and eighty-four thousand, I just said three hundred. So, plus it flooded both the mixers, one of them was hung up in the catwalk. So, we had to get a crane in, we had a crane in that following Tuesday to yank them the hell out of there because they both ate the cords, so I got to put new cords on them. So, it was a little more, there's more involved than just that. Anyhow, we're, we're on the road to recovery, had to drain the tank, all the tanks out and stuff. We're, we're back to where we need to be.
But just to come back to your question, Fish and Boat.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, I got, I got on a tangent there, didn't I?
That's all right.
That guy, that gentleman called me, Officer Schmidt called me, he must have came out after we left. And I actually did meet him on site Monday afternoon around five. They were, he was stuck in Fish and Chester County, he said he'd be later. I was still there with the guys working on the, on the control system Monday evening till like seven thirty. He showed up, we had, we chatted. You know, if we do get a fine, it's going to come from people higher up than the people that arrived on site. The gentleman that Rebecca and I talked to on that following Monday, Patrick McGee, he's our water quality guy that comes out and inspects the plant once a year. He has to write a report up, I had to have one to him. He has to write up his dissertation, it goes up the chain. I don't know if we'll get anything from them or not. The Fish and Boat Commission gentleman stated that it doesn't matter about intent, they were probably going to get something from the Fish and Boat Commission. And I told him if you, he goes, he's saying dead, there's no dead fish. All that stuff settled out within a hundred yards of going out to the stream. I said, if anything, I gave the carps and suckers something to eat for the next month. You know, that's where I'm at with it, but I mean, honestly, it wasn't like it was, you know, it was a very light, you know, a lot of that settled out and honestly, everybody's down there looking, you're not going to see anything, man, it's settled out, it's in the mud, you know, so, I don't know, that's...
As soon as we get communication from either DEP or Fish and Boat Commission, we will certainly let you off.
Yeah, yeah.
We have received no communication.
I have no communication at all.
And then as far as capacity at the plant itself, we're doing okay?
Oh, yeah, no, this has nothing to do with capacity.
Okay, good.
It's called draining the SPR tank about a third, taking a third out of and putting somewhere it shouldn't be.
Very good.
Yeah.
I appreciate your honesty in trying to explain to us because, you know, it's not.
That's what happened, I mean, I got nothing to hide here.
Yeah, no, I know, but I'm just saying that it's, it's not something that I necessarily understand, so I appreciate it.
Oh, yeah, so that, that, what that waste activated sludge is, is basically the stuff that's under irrigation in the SPR tanks. That's your biomass, that's what's taking that raw ethylene in there, influine in there, and that's food for that biomass. The way you keep that system in check is you gotta have food to microorganism ratio correct. So, sometimes you have to waste some of that biomass because it gets too much and you don't have enough food, sorry. So, you gotta play games, you know, you gotta play reindeer games, you gotta get rid of some of it. And then that's what you send through the volute press, that's your cake sludge, that's your byproduct of taking the material out. Whatever you take out of the water goes into that biomass, which... which it goes into your sludge, which we land apply on agricultural sites.
Okay. Thank you. If I understand it correctly, where it is now, where we are right now, you're still not feeling really secure that it's going to work, that shut the valve?
Everything is working. We're just a little heebie-jeebie on the sludge waste valve, so we're not allowing that to work overnight. I want to wait until we have about a month of, under our belt, running those during the day, making sure they shut properly and if they don't, that they send an alarm before I go willy-nilly and say, okay, let's do your thing tonight, you know, so.
Did they figure out why the alarm didn't go off?
Yes. It's programming. You have to understand.
But was, was it programmed incorrectly? It wasn't, was it?
Or wasn't, I can't, if I was a programmer, Linda, I wouldn't be here. I mean, I, I know, I, listen, no, honestly, I know how the system's supposed to work, what's supposed to be on, when and what, and, but how you get that from there from going to a Koyo Siemens unit that was a e-prompt tape running it to an Allen Bradley, which is all digital. They had 130 wires. You had to transfer and get to the right spot, make, and get, program all this crap, like a ladder diagram, going through all this stuff. I don't know that stuff, but I can tell you one thing, that's not working right with, you know, different things. So, but, you know, I'm not a programmer, so I...
But that programming didn't come from us. It came from the people that were hired to do it, right?
Correct. They transferred the existing program.
So I just want to make sure the person that did the programming kind of gets a bump. I mean, I want him, I mean, I hope he sort of won't do that again.
Well, believe me, they're not happy about the situation either. I've, I've used this company numerous times and they've done stellar work and they're not feeling, I mean, even the president of the company was down. I mean, he was there for two days. I mean, they're not feeling all hunky-dory about it either, believe me. You know, it's just...
I'm confident right now that the company is taking it seriously. We've sent the issue over to our solicitor. We have, we have the, you know, fine print of the, of the quote that we signed with them. Unfortunately, you know, due to some language in there, we may or may not have anything we can do about it. But, you know, if a fine is going to come our direction, we'll work with the solicitor and see what we can do.
That's great.
We can do. All right. Thank you, Les.
Yep.
Appreciate it.
And I, you know, if anybody wants at some point, I can show you pictures of whatever you want to see.
We're glad you're not a computer programmer.
That's right, because I...
Yeah, we're glad you are where you are.
Oh, okay. Well, thank you.
All right. Mr. Mayor, you had something?
I did. I know most of us have been down and Les has given the tour of his facility. The man knows more about what goes on in this borough at that end than most people will ever know. And the, the team that he has put together that had worked so well on that Saturday to come in and take care of this, on behalf of myself and I'm sure on behalf of everyone sitting here, council, and all of our residents, I just wanted to say thank you to Les and provide Les and his team with a letter of appreciation. Les, I'm going to have to call you back up, sorry. You're here.
Yes.
This letter of appreciation goes out to Les, Frank Barlow, Robert Chichara.
Chichara.
Chichara, sorry about that. Andrew Echman and Nicole Beauchamp, thank you for what you've done and worked together, so we're going to do it in one of the conferences. Please express our appreciation to them and thank you very much for what you do for us.
Yeah, thank you again, Les. And with that out of the way, I believe we have reached the end of our programming for the evening. So at this time, I will entertain motions to adjourn.
Oh, you don't have a report?
No. Not on the agenda.
I shall move.
No reason to go to executive. No unfinished business. Very well, we've got a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
There we go. Quick offer mark from Phyllis. All those in favor of adjourning, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?